Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Castaneda?
Here.
Councilmember Fleming?
Here.
Councilmember Gaskin?
Here.
Councilmember Secora Ludwig?
Here.
Council Vice President Egan?
Here.
Council President Escobar?
Here. Please be advised that the notice requirements of the Public Meeting Act has been complied with and satisfied. That in the annual notice which gave sufficient notice of the time and place and contact of all public meetings of the municipal council of the city of New Brunswick has been filed with the City Clerk, has been placed on the appropriate relevant board in City Home, and has been transmitted to the official newspaper for the city of New Brunswick, namely the home news paper.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I just want to say that October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and which is a good time to reflect on the issues of domestic violence and its impact on individuals and communities. This have reminded of the importance of raising awareness, supporting survivors, warriors, like I call them, and working collectively towards preventing and ending domestic violence and the cycle of violence. By reflecting during this month, we can work towards a society and a community where everyone can live without fear and free of violence in their home. Thank you.
Motion accepted.
Seven. Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Castaneda?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Secora Ludwig?
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan? Council President Escobar?
Yes.
Lord Attorney, has the correspondence been directed to the appropriate departments?
Yes, Madam President. The correspondence received by the City Clerk's office was forwarded to the appropriate departments for further action.
Thank you. Now we have ordinance for discussion on second reading. We have ordinance 092306 is an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, Title 10 vehicles and traffic, Chapter 10.20 handicap parking, Schedule 39 parking zones for handicap persons. We are adding 286 Columbus Place, 151 Seemestree, 72 Wright Place, and 84 Wright Place. Do any of my fellow councilmembers have any questions or comments on these ordinance? At this time, we are preparing to open the public hearing on these ordinance only. You have up to five minutes per person, one time up. If any member of the public wishes to speak to the council on these specific ordinance, please approach the council. Seeing now?
Move the ordinance.
Second. Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Castaneda?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Secora Ludwig?
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan?
Yes.
Council President Escobar?
Yes. Now we have ordinance 092307 is an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, Title 10 vehicles and traffic, stopping, standing, parking. Schedule 24, no parking at any time. We are adding Jersey Avenue. Do any of my fellow councilmembers wish to address any questions or comments on these specific ordinance? At this time, any member of the public who wishes to address the council on these ordinance only, you have up to five minutes, one time up.
Hi, yes, Daniel Moore, would you please tell me what area of Jersey Avenue that you're putting this in due to where, what this was already in ordinance with Jersey Avenue already? Is this for a specific street, a part of Jersey Avenue?
To relate to what the purpose of it.
Yes, this specifically eliminates parking on the northbound side of Jersey Avenue between Delavan, uh, between Delavan Street all the way up to Handy in order to support the new traffic configuration for the signal at the, at Hale and Jersey.
Thank you, sir.
And excuse me, the, due to where, like I said, due to where, with the, with the pictures are already, like I had showed you before, this was already in ordinance where it had no parking anytime. The only place that was able to park on Jersey Avenue was in front of the grocery store. I don't know the name of the grocery store. So like I said, with you putting up signs where, what, is the police department gonna stop people from what, parking on the cur- cur- curve, blocking the, blocking the road? This was already in ordinance, no parking on Jersey Avenue anytime. Now, due to where, I will thank Mr. Valenti, he did put more signs up, but due to where this was already amended saying no parking due to where, what, how, how, how the road is, if you park on there and then the cars come through. So like I said, you keep putting up signs saying things, but wow, please tell me what, even with the signs seeing, which I have pictures to prove, what, what is New Brunswick Police Department doing to avoid this with people, due to where I'm disappointed with the county had gave the, or, uh, that, for, for, uh, for New Brunswick to handle for each owner to redo the curbing before they paved the road. And that was to stop the people from parking all on top of the sidewalks, blocking and all. Now, so, so please tell me what, now that you've put this through, what am I gonna see, New Brunswick Police Department giving out tickets? Because how many pictures I have with New Brunswick Police Department sitting right there, allowing people to do it? So please, can, can, can you answer my question? Is New Brunswick Police Department gonna give out tickets? What are the, what are the meaning of putting up signs? If you're not, if nothing's being done to stop the people from disrespecting your signs?
I want to ask you same question. Thank you.
Why, you're still not answering my question. Like, like I said, due to where people, this is a school now, parking on the sidewalks, due to where curbing was never put, and you keep saying, oh, you're gonna make sure, just like you say you make sure a lot of things. But is it, is it being done? No, it's not. And like I said, what if I have to bring the other pictures down here showing with New Brunswick Police cars sitting right there, allowing people to park illegally, double on, on there with the, and all? Come on, like I said, get New Brunswick Police Department out there and do their damn jobs.
It's good evening, Charlie Cradaville, New Brunswick, New Brunswick today. I wanted to ask about the installation of the traffic signal that was mentioned. Is there an ETA on when that'll be installed?
The best information we have is the contractor's still waiting several parts to it. The, everything is prepared for once the parts come in. They thought it would be as early as, um, last week. Unfortunately, they have not received all the parts yet. As soon as we have enough, they can.
Okay, so there's no clear date that we can expect this thing?
I'm expecting that they're waiting for parts, so I suspect they can.
All right, is it, is there any information you could provide about what's being done? And the alternative, obviously, you have, have police working the intersections. Is there any agreement as to who's gonna pay for that?
Can we, um, telephone that, may I?
Sure.
That's the public ordinance?
Certainly.
Thank you.
Move the ordinance.
Second. Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Castaneda?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Secora Ludwig?
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan?
Yes.
Council President Escobar?
Yes. We have ordinances on first reading. We have ordinance 102301 and ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, Title 17 zoning, general regulations used in reference to fences and pallets.
I'm sorry, move the ordinance.
Setting down October 18, 2023 at 5:30 PM, same date we are pressed.
Second. Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Castaneda?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Secora Ludwig?
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan?
Yes.
Council President Escobar?
Yes. We have ordinance 102302 is capital ordinance provided for various general capital improvement and acquisitions in and by the city of New Brunswick in the County of New York State of New Jersey, the appropriate 21 million, therefore to pay for the encased property.
I move the ordinance setting down October 18, 2023 at 5:30 PM, same date we are pressed. Second. Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Castaneda?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Secora Ludwig?
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan?
Yes.
Council President Escobar?
Yes. And we have ordinance 102303 is an ordinance to adopt the redevelopment plan for the New Brunswick Lower George Two's plant area in the city of New Brunswick.
I move the ordinance setting down October 18, 2023 at 5:30 PM, same date we are pressed. Second. Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Castaneda?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Secora Ludwig?
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan?
Yes.
Council President Escobar?
Yes. Now we have resolutions 1 to 20, as it was stated before. Resolution number 20 is a correction to a title of resolution 102320. Any members of the council have any questions or any comments on any of the resolutions? At this time, we are preparing to open the meeting to public comment on the resolutions only. You have up to five minutes per person, one time up. Any member of the public wishes to address the council on the resolutions only, please?
Yes, good evening once again, Charlie Cradaville, New Brunswick, New Brunswick today. First one I'd like to ask about is item number four, expanding the C2A zone on a parcel on Harvey Street. Can somebody identify which property this is?
Is it the legal?
Yes. The parcel in question is by Harvey Street. The current building is a one-story auto body mechanic shop. As it's, as that is not permitted using either zone, but it is abutting the C2A commercial zone. You hope that absorbing it into the C2A and allowing for permitted commercial uses to be able to be utilized there, that the property could be converted into something more compatible with the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Thank you for answering that question. Next, item nine is the Garibaldi's liquor license, 89 Jersey Avenue LLC. My understanding that their license has been suspended or revoked. What's the status now, this renewal? Is that gonna mean they'll reopen, or it's just renewed but still suspended?
Can we send a look at our resources for the resolution?
Council President, the liquor license is currently inactive. They do not have any application for a transfer at this place. We just received approval from the state allowing them to renew the liquor license, under the special ruling.
Got it. So the suspension's been lifted. Am I correct, this is the one that did have a suspension for several years?
Yes.
Okay, but that's no longer in place, so if they can find somebody to take it to a new location, they could use the liquor license again. Okay. Also, wanted to ask about the Sterling Side Contract 14. This is an affordable housing project. It's been in the works for many, many years. We've discussed it here many times, and I'm curious what this $825,000 is gonna accomplish and how big a piece of the funding is it?
Um, as to how big of a piece, I would get, I'm trying to ballpark it here. Half, somewhere in the three to six percent range of the total project cost. It's essentially gap funding. They are looking to close on all their financing in the next couple of weeks. And one of the last items was, once those items were like ready to be moved out, then we could go ahead and do our leases. The home funds need to be the last piece in the funding process of gap funding. And so hopefully, they'll be under construction during the ground practice fall and occupied until winter.
Okay, so come to understand that correctly, this is home dollars, H-O-M-E, funds. And I guess, you know, this, this developer's already gotten a long-term tax exemption. I know that we're in a housing crisis and we need affordable housing, and that's one reason that I wasn't so concerned about that exemption. But if the city's gonna also chip in almost a million dollars, why, why did you go out of your way to give a second tax exemption to this developer? If they're coming for, coming to ask for another million, that's, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, they're not gonna pay that much in their pilot for a year, two years, three years. This city's not even gonna get the money back for years, right?
Tom, I can't speak to exact, I think the pilot has a floor of something like $60,000 a year, but it'll depend on revenue, so a lot of that is to be determined. An interesting caveat here, because the developer here is getting low income housing tax credit financing as part of this project to fund it, this is not necessarily a grant nor a forgivable loan, but in fact, when the period of the mortgage expires, the city will be getting back payment from that with interest.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't catch, when does the payment come and once they?
Uh, wherever the mortgage ends, it's my 23rd anniversary from now.
Okay, and that's specifically related to this 825,000?
Yes, they'll be back in full plus interest.
Okay, so, hope to live to see that happen. And finally, I just heard there was an additional item added to the agenda that's not on this, this printed version here. So item 20, can somebody tell me what type of graphical error is being corrected? What resolution was that?
That's the resolution, uh, 40 with the dump areas to the New Brunswick Housing Authority, the resolution.
I see.
And he, he, he correct, he stated he was a resident.
Right, he's not the resident commissioner.
Yes, so maybe, yeah, I said, I need this face.
Okay, terrific, thank you. Can I just ask, I'm sorry, one more thing. The resolution appointing him, has he been sworn in yet? Is he joining the board?
We have to, I'm going here, so I'm not sure he has to, so he asked that question of the New Brunswick Council.
Right, cause he, he, he's not able to participate in the meeting because he hadn't been sworn in yet, so I think that should happen.
Yeah, they told you that they had, they were in communication with the City Clerk, so they're, be sure that after we do this, probably you'll know that.
Okay, you'll have to forgive me, because we did have that one time that somebody got appointed and then they never got sworn in, and then they resigned, so I don't want that to happen again. I want to be certain.
Do things, okay?
Good. Thank you, Council President.
Hi, yes, I'm, I wanna speak on number nine. If I, if I understood correctly, a liquor license is not being used there, that they're able to use this liquor license somewhere else?
It was inactive for a while, and they stayed left to get here, and still inactive. They don't have a place where they're gonna use it, but they could not.
Well, I'm sure it won't be nowhere near Jersey Avenue or French Street, due to what, we have seven bars already surrounding the new school. And sad to say, how many drunkies we have to see every day, what? Please, I just pray, like I said, you guys stop thinking about money and your buddies and think about the community where we don't need. I'm speaking on the resolution, like I said, please, you can try to, I'm not gonna fall for how, how, one, two, three, four, how you always try to get me to get angry like I'm doing something. Do you tell other people to stick with the resolution? I'm making my comments on, 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 on this. Well, thank you, because like I said, I really appreciate you keep doing that, due to where, wow, how can other people bring up things, ooh, with the incident with Jersey Avenue, then what, ooh, ooh, somebody speaks on traffic light. Was that within ordinance? Treat people equal. So, so like I said, due to where, please, no more bars, well, well, with this, with this liquor license, wherever they're able to go. Like I said, we don't need no more bars on Jersey Avenue or French Street area, due to where, like I said, the new school opening, wow, I'm finding a dead body over there yesterday. Enough.
Move the resolutions.
Second. Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Castaneda?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Secora Ludwig?
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan?
Yes.
Council President Escobar?
Yes.
Before we go into the public portion comments and questions of the meeting, I just wanna give a few updates prior to that. Before I go in, any member of the council members would like to talk, say anything?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. attorney?
I just wanted to remind everybody, October is also Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Last year when I spoke on this, I told everybody at the age of 32, they lost my sister about 20 years ago. In between that time, my mother went to go get tested last year at the age of 84, and she was diagnosed with breast cancer also. Because she went to go get a mammogram, they caught it early, she had surgery, so thank God right now she's cancer-free. But you never know if she hadn't gotten tested, because she felt, you know, 84 years old, you know, if she hadn't gotten tested, we could have never known. So just remind people to, to get tested.
Thank you. So just a few before we go into the, like I was saying to the public comment portion of the meeting, I just wanna give a few updates. It is my understanding, and we have received a few inquiries about the New Brunswick Police Department, NICSO alerts, and other incidents that have been happening. So again, as we have stated before, the NICSO alert, the police department is the one that utilizes NICSO to issue warnings for active emergency situations that pose imminent danger to the public, not for informational purposes. And this has been said in the past. While at times NICSO may be utilized for specific circumstances that are determined by the police department, the use of NICSO will remain selective in order to prevent our alerts from becoming so frequent that they are intentionally ignored by the public, and as a result, lose effectiveness. So as of now, the department's approach to the NICSO alerts have been the same for the past few years, so there hasn't been any change. So I hope that clarifies and there's, and there's an understanding of what it is, how the police department does the NICSO alert. There were also some, I believe at the last meeting or before, there was a question about the September 11th shots incident that happened on Grayson Avenue. That incident is open and is an ongoing investigation, so therefore, we are not gonna offer any more comments on that. It's still an ongoing investigation. There was also a question, and they requested, and somebody requested an update on an arrest in June 2023, the homicide incident that happened on Loop Avenue and Delavan. And as it was stated before, any questions related to that incident, they need to be addressed to the Minnesota County Prosecutor's Office. They are the ones in charge of that investigation, okay? So, um, the New Brunswick Fire Department and their heavy practices, there was a question about who does and why, how it does. So the fire director and his administration's administrative staff are the ones that are responsible for the heavy process at the fire department, including background checks on all candidates that they wanna work there. So again, this is all within, this is, you know, that's the information, you know, sometimes we wanna get more, but that's how it is. So it's the fire director and his administrative staff. There were some questions about homeless, and what are some of the things that have been doing, the city has been doing, the department of, the Division of Community Services have been working on several initiatives throughout the city throughout these months to address the challenges faced by the unhoused community, included but not limited to meetings with the Municipal Homeless Prevention Roundtable, which comprised of many service providers who talk about what is, are the issues and ways to resolve those issues. The dignity center's still on, we still, we're getting ready to go blue when it's ready. We, so we are still working on that, and I'll give you more updates as I get them. But just be aware that there's a lot of initiatives going on to help our unhoused community, including some of them who are experiencing challenges with drug addiction. So, and lastly, September 15th to October 15th, Hispanic Heritage Month. We have been celebrating the city and throughout the great contributions of the Latino community here in the city, including we did a flag raising for the, for Puerto Rico, one from Mexico, and we also were able to open the first, you know, consulate, Mexican consulate in this, here in the city of New Brunswick, and that's a great accomplishment for the state of New Jersey. So we are, I am very happy that we were chosen to be those who were hosting the consulate here for our community residents also. So at this time, we are getting ready to prepare to open the public portion. This is a common, eh, portion, it's public comment. Anybody who wishes to address the council and any comments have up to five minutes, one time up. So any members of the public who need to speak to the public portion, public comment, please.
Hi, my name is Kirsten Zennikis. I'm a lifelong resident of Middlesex County. I've served jury duty here before, I, multiple times, actually, I'm called again for January. I'm sorry, Kirsten Zennikis. Yeah, so I've grown up in this larger community, I grew up specifically in North Brunswick. Currently reside in Edison because I could not find affordable housing in New Brunswick. I wanted to live in New Brunswick because I work in New Brunswick. All of my degrees, all three are from Rutgers University, so I spent a lot of time in this city as someone who's volunteering time, as someone who's working here as a student, and I seen the changes the community's gone through over the years. I'm standing here before you today as a nurse who works at Robert Wood Johnson University Hospital, a level and trauma center that services the community. Right now, we are facing a large public health concern. As I'm sure you're aware, this is day 62 of our unfair labor practice strike. It is not about money, it is largely about patient safety. We take care of all members of the community, regardless of if you are pregnant or a baby, if you are someone who is unhoused and found in the middle of the street, for whatever reason. Regardless of the reason you're there, hospitals do not turn people away, and that is due to federal legislation, yes. However, physicians, nurses, we take an oath to serve people. We've had members of our nurses while on strike stopping, checking people at car accidents. There were some, a person the first day of the strike who collapsed in the street, and we had nurses checking on them. That's think of that as part of who we are, and we care about the community. So we are really asking for everyone to look at the safe staffing bill that has been paused in the Assembly and State Senate for about 20 years. I myself work on a cardiac shutdown unit. Who decided that? Everyone who has a heart. We look around, I think you'll see plenty of people who have hearts. Our primary population is people who have heart failure, so a lot of times, that does mean people who are getting middle-aged or older. We do take care of people who are post-pacemaker placement, who are post-AICD placement, people who, you know, were at their child's dance recital and suddenly had crushing chest pain, were brought in. And so they had elementary each child, they're doing homework with over Zoom while in the hospital. We take care of all of those types of people. We also do heart transplants on our floor as well, and help recover people once they're cleared from the ICU, as well as ALVAS, left ventricular assist devices. So those are people who could not function, their heart's not functioning anymore without these devices. There have been studies that have shown that for every additional patient a nurse takes over four, the increase, mortality increases by about like seven percent. We regularly have like six patients on my floor. So that is more than what the federal proposed safe staffing legislation has mentioned, and it's more than what has really been deemed safe. We want to be back at work caring for our patients. We want to do so safely. I'm a newer nurse, I was a teacher before to be a nurse, so I made the intentional decision to switch. I made the intentional decision to continue working in this community because I feel like there's a great need here. We have a large diverse population in Middlesex County, and that's the thing I loved about Rutgers, something I loved about growing up here. And it pained me to see that there's evidence of a profit being put over patients. Any one of us could get into a car accident driving home from here and need the hospital. The ER can be very busy, putting it lightly. And it matters, all those seconds do matter when you're being triaged in the ER, then determining what level of care you need. If it's your wife or daughter in labor and something goes wrong, you need people to be there quickly. If it's, we're there for, you know, the domestic violence victims and perpetrators at times too, anyone who comes in, we take care of them. We're there for all members of the community regardless of color of skin, language you speak. We're there for all of you, and we're asking for all of the councilmen and women to really take a look at what's going on and make choices that are best for your constituents. Thank you.
I don't know if I'm gonna say it, it's nice that she did. My name is Jessica, you know, and I'm also a registered nurse at Robert Wood Johnson in New Brunswick. Not only am I a nurse, but I was also born and raised here in New Brunswick. I am a graduate from the New Brunswick Health Science Technology High School, and my desire to become a nurse actually started freshman year at, um, New Brunswick Health Science. We used to go to Robert Wood. I fell in love not only with the profession, but I fell in love with the idea of becoming one day a nurse at Robert Wood Johnson. And it is very shameful that we have been out for 62 days, and unless you guys don't live in New Brunswick, or you guys just never pass by the hospital, we have been there in the heat, we have been there in the rain, we have been outside for 24 hours, for 62 days. I work in pediatric oncology, I am a Hispanic woman, I am serving my community. And when I take care of my patients, I'm not caring for just a patient, I'm caring for them as if I'm caring for a loved one. We are asking that you please show support of us, supporting the bills for safe staffing. You guys have a duty to serve the people of New Brunswick, and this affects the people of New Brunswick. I'm just gonna give you one example of the department that I work in. In pediatric, hematology, oncology, we give chemotherapy. We treat children with long-term diseases like sickle cell anemia, they come in with pain crisis. We have a wide array, I've dealt with dying children, and it is disgusting that those patients can't get the care that they deserve because we've been short-staffed. I experienced on one shift. I experienced on one shift where it was only two nurses on my shift, myself and my pregnant coworker. We had no tech, we had no unit clerk. At 2:00 in the morning, I went to go help a patient to a bedside commode because we didn't have a tech and my patient started seizing. The patient was 6'2", bigger than I was. I had to call my pregnant coworker to come in and assist me so the patient wouldn't fall off of the bedside commode. I had to call a rapid response and while I was waiting for extra personnel to help take that patient to the bed safely, I had to run to another unit to get extra help. So I am calling on you guys to please show support for our nurses and show real support for your community. Don't just say that you serve them, actually do something to show them that you guys care. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Stephanie Torres. I am also a resident of New Brunswick for 32 years. I'm 32 years old. That is how long Mayor Cahill has been in office since 1991. I went to school here, elementary, middle school, high school. I also went to New Brunswick Health Sciences and Technology High School. My passion was to pursue a career in healthcare and through mentorship and through volunteering at Robert Wood because that was the place to be back then. Everybody wanted to be at Robert Wood. You had to know somebody who knew somebody to be at Robert Wood. That was the goal. So I started my time there in 2005 volunteering. So imagine how many years that that's been so far. I want to help my Hispanic community here. I think we all know that this community is very underserved. There's a lot of poverty, there's a lot of mental health problems, there's addiction problems, there's housing problems. I have seen how even though Robert Wood has grown so much, I've seen their growth push out a lot of our residents here in New Brunswick because of all the development that they've done. When I became a nurse, I said, when I see somebody's face line up because I look like them helping them, then I'll know that I have served my purpose. We get so many patients at the hospital. I've worked in an adult unit and I work on an adolescent unit where we serve patients 12 years and up. The look that you see on somebody's face when they don't have to struggle to speak to you and they don't have to struggle to explain what they're going through, they're in pain, their stomach hurts, they want to throw up. Sometimes they just want to turn the TV on and they can't express that to you. Now, I speak Spanish, but imagine me running around trying to take care of all my other patients and their needs. Sometimes we have call bells going off for 10 or more minutes. The call bell is how you reach your nurse for something, a smile's turning on the TV or for an emergency, I fell, I'm seizing, I'm in severe pain, I'm bleeding through my wound in my stomach. And for that to be going off for 10 minutes is unacceptable. Like Jessica said, do what you say you're going to do. First of all, acknowledge that we've been out there for 62 days. This tan is not my regular tan. This tan is because I've been out there, like Jessica said, in the sun. Today was super hot, in the rain, I've gotten drenched. Acknowledge us. I am tired of being the villain in this story. We are tired of being the villain in Robert Wood Johnson's story, okay? We are not greedy, okay? We are not greedy. I grew up in such a different upbringing. My parent, my parents worked, a cook. My mom was a housekeeper at Robert Wood for 20 plus years. I know what it's like to not have a lot and then to suddenly find this beautiful profession and be able to provide for myself and for my family. I am not greedy, okay? I want to provide the care that my patients deserve. You might say, okay, if we give you the money, well, what's one more nurse? You could do without one more nurse. One more nurse makes the world of difference. Mortality rates, infection rates, less falls, less infections. And if you want me to speak the language that I'm sure some of you guys are very familiar with, let's stop business. Re-admission rates will go down. So that means the hospital will get to keep all of that money that they want to keep, okay? We don't want patients being readmitted for the same thing and then you not getting reimbursed by whoever it is that you get reimbursed from. So what I am asking you to do is acknowledge our fight, acknowledge our struggle. We are out there fighting for our patients despite the fact that sometimes they don't know what we're, that we're fighting out there for them. On the line, I've heard, go back to work, stop being greedy, do your job. You went into this profession because you're supposed to care about people. Stop putting our lives at risk, okay? Just because I came into this career to be compassionate, does that mean that I don't deserve to be safe? There are so many times that a nurse has gotten assaulted. They have gotten hit, punched, kicked, nurses with brain injuries because they've gotten assaulted by patients. That is preventable. It was preventable if you would have had another nurse, another tech, someone at the nurse's station to provide help for you. So I know I'm all over the place, but at the end of the day, please acknowledge us. I know that Robert Wood Johnson has very deep pockets and they have a lot of reach. They own the billboards, they own the newspapers, whether you admit it or not. But at the end of the day, I know that each and every one of you are human. When you go home at night and you fall asleep, remember where you came from. I'm actually very surprised and proud to see diversity on this council because growing up, I probably maybe wouldn't have seen it. So think about where you came from, think about where you want the city to go and please, please acknowledge our fight. We are not greedy and we're not going anywhere. We're 62 days and counting. We are not going anywhere. Thank you.
Well, hi, yes, Daniel Moore, will you please pass those to Mr. Prideville?
I will no longer need those. Hi, yes, Daniel Moore, I'm going to speak on, starting with you council members, due to where I see your plan, you're playing me like the devil due to where I'm speaking the truth. Like I said, how you let one person speak a little longer, this five minutes, you let somebody else speak 10 minutes. That was you, Mr. Egan, then you, Count President, due to where letting somebody speak on a different, it wasn't regards to resolutions, then, excuse me, I forget the new young lady's name, due to where, and how you tried to call me race, race, due to where what I was dealing with my court case. When someone's not a US citizen, there, it says, when you Google it, it's illegal immigrant. But one thing about it, like I said, due to why I hadn't been asleep last night. What I don't go by, the person doesn't have to have the same color skin, the same blood level. I don't have to be in a relationship with someone to show someone that I love you due to where, like I said, after finding a woman last night on George Street, what the police will tell you, what, did I go to the hospital with her? And I'm going to speak up due to where, am I seeing the right things done with people in that hospital? No, I'm not. That was last one, I put up a post, I said, wow, when other young lady, she fell and collapsed into my arm. I went up there, went there to the hospital, due to where what? You had five patients running around the nurses couldn't handle. I said, wow, to this patient, you get over there and sit down. You get over there and eat your food, you go do this. The nurses looked at me like, wow, why are they listening to me? Because you have to know how to work with the people when they know you and that's the difference between these nurses and our nurses. They know how to work with the patients the right way. And we do, we do need our nurses back because like I said, they cannot handle you, each department, if you're not, you've got to know a person to really work, work with them. And like I said, to see, they looked at me like, wow, why are they listening to me? I said, ooh, that one from French Street, that one from French Street, that one from Pittman Park, that one's from there. Then she understood why they were all listening to me. Like I said, I do more show for this, more community than you lousy council members and the police department. But I tell you, it's only one person that trusted me due to where I have special vision, where I find and save lives. The only one here that sent Mr. Lovren left, that's Captain Hira. Due to where what, I told you that was the night with the fireworks. Ooh, please close it off. He did, what, what happened? Did it flood, did an emergency flood come through where you had to evacuate the people the other way? Like I said, I'm not here as no devil. And like I said, I'm approved of you, I'm not the devil because like I said, I get paid for what I do. You heard me plenty of times months ago saying, oh, I cannot afford no, no $300,000 PSCMB. To see my bill only $20.76 from all of volunteering crossing them kids for free. What did I say? The Lord's blessing me. So stop treating me like the devil because you're the devil. I do more for you, but like I said, I'm going to speak up. We want our real nurses back because I don't see people getting the proper treatment, even pay people getting on Facebook making, making comments saying, oh, I have to remove my people from there. I'm not going to mention anybody's name, but due to where, yes, how could you mark somebody down for DNR if they didn't even sign for it? Those nurses, I'm sorry, due to where we want our real nurses back. You got to, if you're used to a person coming in with drinking, drug-related mental, you know how to work with them. Everybody doesn't know how to work with. And one thing I will say on that, instead of every officer learning Spanish, I say New Brunswick Police Department needs to work with medical, mental, drug and alcohol due to where, learn how to work with people. I do it all the time. How, like I said, how many times do I say? How do I pop up everywhere? I don't have no police radio. That was just like you said, sad to say. What did I tell you a while ago? That wasn't an area for school. What did you do? Find a dead body over there? What, come on? When would you start listening to the truth? I tell you what, it's not for years, I haven't proven to you that I have special vision. But like I said, all you care about is what, your partners, your money, where it goes. You're definitely not here for the community and very sad to say. But like I said, we do want our real nurses back.
Hi, my name is Carol Tansey. I'm a registered nurse at Robert Wood Johnson for over 25 years. The nurses there are special because we've dedicated our life to building what that hospital is. Administrators come and go every two years, making their millions of dollar salary. Yet they're putting the narrative out that we're about the money. There's not a nurse that works there that has a salary near a million dollars. There's not an administrator who can walk in a room and have a patient choose them over one of us. What we've built there is trust and loyalty because we have respect and dignity for the people we take care of. That's what we're asking from our community today, this New Brunswick community. We have been largely ignored. We've made several phone calls, reached out on different opportunities. We've been largely ignored and that hurts. We've never turned our back on anybody. That's not who we are and we expect more from our government as well. And this is what we consider our community. For us to have to walk out, we're responsible legally with our license to be advocates for the patients. For years, we've been sounding the alarm that we are not staffed properly. We do not have the proper equipment. All because profits have been the preferred.
Whatever, patients.
Profits over patients. For us, that's disgusting, but we've gone with it. COVID, we don't have money, budget. But now things are coming out into the open. We're seeing different relationships that we don't understand. Why is George Tommy now going to be our whatever? Like these relationships don't make sense to us because we're trying to take care of patients, but we're not being allowed to do that. What happened at Robert Wood Johnson was nurses, under the highest level of advocacy, decided to walk away from the bedside to get attention because we think it's that important that we're not complicit anymore in doing something that we know is not correct. It's not ethical, it's not moral. When you accept an assignment that you know you're not capable of, you can now be liable. Precedent was set this year at University of Vanderbilt in Tennessee. A nurse was criminally prosecuted for making a mistake. When we know that, the more patients, I'm sorry if some of you are resting your eyes. It was more, the more patients you're responsible for, the more likely you are to make a mistake. And we've been sounding the alarm, but nobody's listening, so we walked out. And to our greatest heartbreak and dismay, people still weren't listening. So we're asking you today, there are bills that have been before the legislature for 20 years. That's a sin. That's a sin on all people who sit at a table and claim to be public servants. We are imploring Assemblyman Egan, Assemblyman Joe Danielson and Senator Bob Smith to pass the two pieces of legislation that are currently before, S304 and A4536. This is not a luxury, it's not a favor, it's a moral obligation. And it's something that we are really, really imploring you to do to search your conscience and decide which side of your list you want to be on. The fact that nobody has spoken out to Robert Wood Johnson, not one of you have walked the line with us, come to ask our stories, find out what's going on. Maybe you believe the hospital's narrative that we're overpaid. We're not overpaid. That is not our problem. Our problem is we're understaffed, we're not respected and our community is not respected. We're treated with dignity. And we're here today to tell you that we are not going anywhere, that we will fight this fight because we know it's the right fight. And I really don't care. I don't care who we have to swing at, who we have to bring with us. But I'm telling you right now, if you ever have a family member in the hospital, they will not get their back turned on by us as we have had done to us. Thank you.
Hi, everyone, my name is Linda Jenny. I work in the NICU, so we take care of the most innocent, the most fragile, the most frightening cases that one parent can never imagine that we're taking care of. We too have been forced to take care of more babies than we're, we're really, you know, capable of doing. And again, we have asked our management, can we please have extra help? And they keep telling us again and again, there's nobody here. We can't get anybody to come in. We called everybody, I'm sorry, but this is, we're going to have to make do with what we have. So I have to say, our strike started on August 4th. I worked on August 3rd. We had 19 babies in our NICU and we had eight nurses. On August 4th, when this strike started, there was 19 babies also, but there was 17 nurses that were taking care of those babies. So they were well overstaffed and we were asking for one nurse. Please just give us one extra nurse to make it easier for us to take care of. I mean, we have parents, they see the alarms going off and they are freaking out. We have one nurse who's like covering so many babies and we can't be everywhere all the time. So, you know, we are able to watch the monitors from another place. But sometimes we don't know about these alarms going off because we're so far away and there's, there's only, you know, so much space that we can put the other babies on a monitor, watch them. The parents are running through the unit in a panic, struggling, you know, it's sad. Over the years, they have taken, added many, many tasks for us in the NICU. They've put in a new computer system that takes so much time. We were sitting there for hours charting and they've added task upon task upon task, all at the same time of taking our ancillary help away. And so recently, we have been, well, it's not even recently. About eight years ago, we bought in a program that supposedly is safe for the babies to get the breast milk from the parents. We literally have to leave our bedside, go in a room and at some times you might have maybe eight or nine nurses on the floor. Four of us are jammed in a little room because they said that's where you have to do it. A milk tech who gets paid a fraction of what the nurses get paid would be able to do this job. And we have asked for that and we keep hearing, it didn't pass financial, sorry. At least we'll have to try again next, next time we have opportunity. We had a town hall meeting with Bill Arnold before the strike happened. I would say maybe Tuesday or Wednesday, I came on my day off because I know how we suffocate at the floor with the, with our work is so hard. And I went to that meeting on my day off and he was asking, what do we do? Bill Arnold and Alan Lee, what can we do? What can we do? We already put $6 million down, down for this strike. If we can avoid paying more payments, we will do that. What do you need? What do you need? And then we were telling them our stories, our horror stories. And he was like, oh my gosh, I didn't know, I didn't know. I left that meeting thinking, wow, maybe they care after all. I thought Friday night, you know, midnight, we're not going to be on strike. I woke up in the morning, we're on strike. I was like, they stood there in front of us and lied through their teeth and said, we're going to fix this and they had no intention of fixing it, they knew it. So now they're paying millions upon millions upon millions of dollars to break our union and to support what's in there. And I'll have to say also, the nurses that are in there, they are not as experienced as we are. We have 20, 30, 40 years. We are all, many, many of us have specialties. We're certified in our specialty. I bet you if you go over there and find out who's got what specialty, you're not going to find a whole lot. We're hearing stories about really dangerous things that are happening there. I myself called the Department of Health. I got a voicemail. I was like, are you kidding me? So it's like, who's watching who? It's like you have the fox watching the hen house here and it's very disturbing. And I replied, I loved my job five years ago when things started changing. I said, oh my God, this is bad. I'm so glad I'm old and I can get out finally. My intention is to help the next generation. I really don't want to do this anymore because it is dangerous, it is stressful. Alter, can you imagine? Our 12-hour shift, we're hearing babies crying, alarms going off, phones ringing, parents are complaining. It's physically impossible. You leave there, if you're lucky, at 7:30. Most of the time, you have to start charting at 7:30. I keep little notes because I can't remember everything that happened. You are so overwhelmed with interruptions throughout the day that you can't keep your head straight. And by the time 7 o'clock comes and I gave a report to the next shift, I can't even think about charting, I want to scream. It's horrifying. It's horrifying. I'm telling you, nobody's gonna do this long term. The new generation is gonna leave, and nursing is gonna have a huge issue. The patients will suffer.
Hello, my name is Lindsay Castro. I'm a nurse at Robert Wood Johnson's NICU department. I'm a New York transplant. I've been living in New Jersey for six years. I love New Jersey. I came here with my six-month-old son. He's here, he's six now. So I came here because I wanted to have a different life than I had in the city. I grew up in the city, and I love the city, but I didn't want that for my son. I want him to have a place to play and to have a good childhood, not have to hear sirens, bullet shots, and anything like that. So I came to New Jersey. I started my career in 2011 as a nurse at Kings County Hospital in Brooklyn. I went to, my mom lives in, I spent seven years over there. And I was in White Plains before I came here. When I came to Robert Wood Johnson and I met all my colleagues, I felt like I was home. But once I got on the floor and I saw the amount of patients I was getting every night, I felt like I'm back in the city. I'm back in those kind of trenches again. Having seven, eight, nine patients in the ED, all biding for my attention. Who do I give my attention to first? Is it the patient that needs blood or the patient that's not breathing? It becomes hard for you because you have to make these decisions. And we shouldn't have to make these decisions. I'm hearing it's all about this narrative that Robert Wood Johnson's saying that it's about the money. I took a $15 pay cut so I can be here in New Jersey, close to my son's school. It's not about the money for every nurse that works, that comes to work every day. It's about being in a profession that we love and taking care of people. People do go into nursing because they care and they want to make a difference. But if you're not giving me the space to make a difference safely and to provide safe care for our patients, the only people that's gonna lose is the patients. Now we have this narrative that we don't want to go back to work. It's 62 days. We want to go back to work. We've been wanting to go back to work. We never wanted to leave. No one is hearing about this. We're hearing about the strike in Michigan. We're hearing about strikes everywhere else. But nobody is talking about New Brunswick, New Jersey. Why is that? Why are we being silent? Nobody comes. Phil Murphy hasn't come. I don't know if the senator is here. But nobody's come, nobody's come. And we're in there day in and day out. We're in the rain, we're in the heat. And no one has come to say, hey, what's going on here? Why are you guys not back in your jobs? I could go back to New York and get, go back to my job and get paid more. But I'm not gonna do that because I've already made a home here. I've established friends and family. And this is my hospital. And I'm not gonna give up on my hospital. The same way I don't give up on my patients, and the same way I won't give up on my kid. This is my family. So I'm asking you guys, when you guys go tonight and go home and lay your head on the pillow, know that one day you guys will be a patient somewhere. And you guys want nurses that are dedicated. But if you're driving the nurses away, if you're making our jobs hard, at this point, I would rather be a farmer. I would rather do anything else. I would rather work at McDonald's. Because I'm not doing what I was trained and what I love. So please reconsider and consider passing and talking to people to pass this bill, safe staffing, and get us back into Robert Woods. That's where we want to be, that's where our hearts are. Thank you so much.
Hello, my name is Nancy Lipshatz. I am a resident of Middlesex County. I am a registered nurse with Robert Wood Johnson for 35 years. 35 years. I helped build that place. When I started at Robert Wood, it wasn't Robert Wood. It was Middlesex General Hospital. Robert Wood came in, they gave us their name, and then the nurses came because we knew it was going to be the academic center where we will do the best things. We will do the great things. And we became the premier hospital of central New Jersey. It was all about the nurses. It's not about the people who are in the vice president, the CEO, the CFO. It is not them. It is the people who are sitting there, changing the bedpans, cleaning people up, giving them their dignity, holding their hands when they are crying and dying, comforting the families. When their mother, or their father, or their child is dying. You do not go into this profession for money. A hospital system does not need to spend $75 million on scab nurses. They could have taken a percentage of that money and just said, okay, we were going to hire more nurses. I work in the adult ICU. There are times they're like, okay, you have, you can take three patients. Three patients, three critically ill patients I am responsible for. I want to know, how am I supposed to divide myself amongst them while protecting my license? Okay? I need to know. This is what we are up against. And they will sit there and say, the narrative is, there's a nursing crisis. There is no nursing crisis, people. The crisis is that nurses are not willing to work at the bedside under these conditions. If Robert Wood Johnson... These ratios, which are no different than the federal ratios that are still in the government, no different than the federal ratios that we want in our own assembly, we would not be on strike. That's all I can tell you, is that this is insane that you don't believe that these ratios make a difference. California has had them for over 20 years. We were told hospitals were closed. Not one documented hospital closed. We were told, oh no, it's not physically responsible, it's this, it's that. Every frickin' hospital in California has been making money. Why? Their reimbursement improved, their re-emission rates dropped, pressure ulcers dropped, central line infections dropped, pneumonia dropped. Why? Because you can actually care for your patients and do every little thing for them. I cannot tell you how many times I have gone home. And I have cried to my husband because I couldn't do everything I needed to do. And if you think that this does not weigh on every single nurse, every single person, you are unfeeling human being. We are people. We are there because we have devoted our lives to taking care of these people. We care for our patients. We want to do what's right. We want our patients over profits. We want them safe, and we want them cared for appropriately. So please, listen to our narrative. And not everybody else's narrative. We are the ones. If you are in that bed, it is me taking care of you. It is me giving you your medication. It is me wiping your butt because you're too sick. Okay? And I will do it, and I will maintain your dignity, and I will take care of you, and I will help you as well as your family, and I will get you out of the hospital. Thank you.
Hi all, I didn't plan to speak tonight, but I'm motivated by my fury as a patient at this hospital. I was actually born in this hospital, as Nancy said. It was Middlesex County General when I was there, so don't look that up. But yeah, so I was born there. When I was 13 years old, my mom, she had brain cancer. We came to Robert Wood Johnson because of the reputation that this hospital has, that these nurses helped build, okay, for this community. We trusted that reputation. And my mom is alive today, okay? I had this conversation with my mom, and I've been talking to her because I've been coming out on the strike lines with these people. And I've been talking to them on the night shift when you find the lowest morale, you know, of people. And you get the real stories of these people who have been suffering for years doing this job. And I told my mom about this, and she said, you know, I feel really bad because, you know, the doctors, they have the knowledge and they have the skills and they do the surgeries and everything. But it's the nurses who sit with you, and they cry with you, and they hold your hands when you don't know what to do and you think you're gonna die. It's the nurses who sit when she just... My mom recently, on April 20th, broke her hip, unfortunately. Now, that's not a pleasant thing to go through. I hope none of you have to do that. But they rushed her into the emergency room. They had three prior surgeries of hip replacements that day. She wasn't scheduled, but they took her in. They took her in that night to get the surgery done. That's what kind of service these nurses and these team of people give to this community. And that's why I live in Spotswood, I don't live in New Brunswick. But I drive up here. I can easily go to the hospital in Old Bridge, but they don't have the same reputation as this hospital does. That's why I make my, every trip I need to come to a hospital, I need to Robert Wood Johnson. I come into your community, I'm part of this community. I go to Rutgers School here. You know, you, Sir, Mr. Fleming, Councilmember Fleming, I believe it was you who mentioned, your family member had breast cancer, was saved by it. It was this, these kind of people who save family members. You yourselves, how can we not understand as community members that this, what their fight is? It affects all of us as patients. If we don't see that today, if you don't understand that today, you will surely understand it when your time comes to go into a hospital and get the care from these people who have the skill, that took the time out of their lives to get the skill to take care of all of you. Now, I just want to take my time and thank all of them from the bottom of my heart. I just want to say that yes, it's all come full circle, that there may be some nurses here who did help, you know, bring me into this world. And I just want to thank you. And I implore the leaders here today to understand the immense need of support that these nurses need from leaders like yourself. Because they're certainly not getting it from our senators, our governor, our Senator Menendez, who has other things on his mind with the gold bars. You know, I mean, this is, this is, no, it needs to be said because this is the kind of, this is the leadership that's being, you know, our children are seeing this. You have the power to stand up and help good people like this. I implore you to do it.
Good evening, Charlie Cradville, once again. I have to start with an apology regarding the shooting at Remsen and Hale on September 11th. I regretfully gave some bad info at this microphone. Public was informed of that shooting in a social media post, though not a NICSIL alert like many of us would like to see. So I've already apologized to you in writing, but I did want to apologize publicly and correct the record, because I think that's important whenever anybody gets something wrong, that you correct the record. So I do extend my sincere apologies about that. Speaking of NICSIL alerts, there was a NICSIL alert yesterday, it's been alluded to. Can anybody tell us what the police activity was about at Jersey Avenue and French Street?
Lieutenant, I'm over. I've really set out, I've read that part in my update.
Yeah, it's kind of surprising. The NICSIL was issued so as to delay any parents had that the investigation had anything to do with the school, which it did not, it was not on school property. It was just kind of invisible investigation, we wanted to make sure that what happened.
Investigation into what?
Deceased male was located near the road across.
Okay, so there was, sorry, correct, it was a dead person found, I'm sorry to hear that. I have to ask, is there any comment you have now that you're aware of the personnel change at the Housing Authority? You know, a new interim executive director, Mr. Toto, took over from Mr. Clark. I've been bringing it up at every meeting that this change was gonna happen, now it has happened. Do you have any comment on that?
No comments. The thing that I will say is that I have known Mr. Toto for a long time. He's a very capable individual, I'm looking forward to his training, probably looking forward to permitting.
Okay. And I asked this at the board meeting, but I haven't gotten a response yet. Is it true there was someone working remotely from California on the payroll at the New Brunswick Housing Authority?
You were at the meeting, but you said I didn't receive a response to that.
The response was, we'll get back to you. So I'm asking again, because nobody got back to me. And what's up with the guy from Houston, Texas? He was, there was a resolution that would have made him the interim executive director, but then it was pulled?
It's a table, you should have to, I have no part of the board, at least the crack members there to be asked. So that's a question that you have to pull through, to the board of commissioners.
Okay. Well, I guess I wanted to use the balance of my time to speak about what's clearly the issue of debt. I agree wholeheartedly that this nurses' strike is a real public health concern for all of us. And I, for one, stand with the Nurses Union. They are sacrificing and striking for every one of us for safety, like the shirts they're wearing say, safe staffing saves lives. And, you know, unfortunately, I've had to spend some time in the hospital in the past few days. And I can tell you firsthand the difference between an okay nurse and a great nurse, even just as a visitor, can make your day completely different, your experience. And I know that, you know, the folks that work at Robert Wood are great. And I applaud them for what they're doing because they're not just, you know, striking for themselves. They are striking to, with the goal of achieving a policy change that would affect every hospital in New Jersey. And ensuring the same types of protections that exist in California, as has been alluded to, has had a positive impact on public health. So I wanted to ask the council, I'll note, this council has in the past weighed in on other pieces of state legislation that you thought there was good reason to pass a resolution supporting it and send that resolution off to our reps. The bills were noted here, S 304, A 4536. May I ask, as the council, are you open to passing a resolution supporting those policies? Is that something you can agree to pass tonight or put on your agenda for the next meeting?
As you know, in the past, we've had a decision with any others, that is, we have a discussion on it. So I am not prepared to say that we are in support of that. So maybe we need the council, ask the council. I'm not so personal. The council historically, we don't get involved in... In negotiations? In negotiations? But I do hope that it is crucial to hear everybody. And my hope is that a solution is balanced, and a first solution is soon. And saying that is again, I cannot speak on the council, that's something that personally, that's something different that people can just, I have not been informed to talk about the deals that they're taking. Now, I put them down, so I'm gonna make that. So that's all I will say at this point.
Okay, well, thank you. I look forward to you researching those and getting back to us. Thank you.
Hi, 1143 Sedan Street. President Escobar, you just referenced that, of course, there's a difference between action taken by the council actions or opinions that folks might hold personally. I'm genuinely curious of yourself or any other council members would like to say personally how you feel about everything that you've heard tonight.
I'll address my thoughts in the meantime, just continue, you're coming. That's what you want to know. So just tell me, just continue so we don't waste your time.
Sure.
I'm pretty sure I'll speak on the meantime.
Yes, I would definitely, I'm sure everyone in the room would really look forward to hearing a response to that. Other matters that I would also like to address during my public comment time, something I brought up at the previous meeting about the Feaster Park, which was recently reopened. Very glad for all of the updates that have been made there. I was certainly glad to see that, you know, a public restroom was added as one of the new amenities to the park. But I'm sad to say that after the park opened, I found that the bathroom was never actually made available to the public. Anytime that I have been there, I asked at the previous council meeting, what are the hours? You know, what are the reasons that the bathroom would be either accessible or not accessible to the public? The response that was given is that it's only available and open when there are park staff there to supervise, which Mr. Valente had said is before 3:00 PM and not after 3:00 PM. I have been to the park almost every single day over the past two weeks. AM, PM, doesn't matter the time, every single time the bathroom has been locked. And I just, it is a frustration.
Feaster Park? Which park?
The Feaster Park. So I'm wondering, is there any additional information that can be provided on, are the bathrooms actually ever intended to be open? What really are the, what is the availability that the community should be able to expect from that?
I will provide you an update at the next meeting, no sooner.
Mr. Valenti doesn't have any commentary?
At this time, again, I will provide you an update prior to the meeting or the next meeting. If I do it sooner, I will, I know how to contact you.
Another question, so I'd seen that one of the boardrooms on first reading was redevelopment plan for the poor area of Bay Street. I'm assuming that that, you know, is a plan to address the, you know, the question of the future for that area. I hear that, you know, for the summer, it has been closing under vehicle traffic for outdoor seating and pedestrian use, and there was a question mark as to whether that would continue into the future or whether it would be reopened to vehicle traffic permanently. Did you have any?
This is something different.
This is something different.
There was, Nancy, this is a lot further down by O'Neilson, by Abundant Life, that area. So it has nothing to do with George Street, but so it's a little bit different to what you were referring to in terms of downtown, you know, more pedestrian, more, but as you wanted to update on some of the things that have been working on, I know it's premature, but I know there have been some plans and some conversations that have been going to better service.
The update I can provide is that through City Market, we vetted a couple of different phases of plans and three different actual plans that we are looking at. And then as a collective organization, we made a recommendation to send them to the council, the full council, so they can be vetted and everyone will have an opportunity to see those, and then they will become available to the public. It is in the process of being worked on.
So we're working on it. This is an ongoing.
Sure.
We will continue to give you updates.
Yes. Is there any rough timeline? I understand things can change, but any rough timeline?
I wish I could give you one, but there really is no, there is no timeline right now. We want to get through the process as quickly as possible, and just because we're looking at it does not mean that something is going to happen or is not going to happen. It's clearly a recommendation coming through City Market now to see what the best approach is from the city, and this board has to look at that.
We continue to be well, thanks.
Yes, we'll go to that. And then something else I'm certainly always looking forward to updates and additional information on is the efforts to address the homelessness crisis as well as the drug addiction crisis in New Brunswick, something I've certainly spoken on many times before at this microphone. You've mentioned, you know, that there are, you know, discussions being had, plans being made as we move into the colder weather in particular, but it's always good to have more information distributed about those programs.
And you're so, you are trying to see that as we just again, to give an update at every meeting related to some of those challenges that are always asked, just to have that ongoing conversation and providing information to the residents.
I appreciate it.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Good evening. John Schu, 209 West Shirley Avenue, Edison, New Jersey. I'd just like to, I guess, congratulate Councilman Egan, who's going to be leaving and joining the State Assembly pretty soon in January, or hopefully he'll win your election. Yeah, so, you know, obviously, the nurses here are concerned about the bill, A4536, the safe staffing. And, you know, hopefully, you know, I hope you had a chance to look at that and be supportive and be willing to co-sponsor that. I know you're placing your father, and he was a big union person, and hopefully we'd like him to actually co-sponsor that bill as well for the nurses' sake, for the nurses here, here, and also throughout the state. I think, Council President, I know you don't really want your, the councils to really speak on these matters, but, I mean, would you ask, Councilman?
You know, the rats have been swamby. I mean, if anyone would like to say something, I would ask them again.
Okay. Well, that's, you know, that's it. You know, we have it out there. This bill is very important, S304. We want Miles Smith to support it. We want, you know, Egan and Danielson to support the companion bill in the Assembly. You know, we do have a lot of nurses here in the Skyway, Worth Brunswick, New Brunswick, South Brownbrook round, I think around 200 or so. So, you know, there are a lot of constituents that are concerned about this issue. So I just want to put that out there and let that on the public record, let that know that, let it be known that is very important to our nurses here.
Thank you. (APPLAUSE). Let us, for the public, say no before we close. I ask for an adjournment. Any council member wishes to make any comment? Mr. Fleming?
My sister's a nurse, and my mother is a nurse at Robert, well, it was Middlesex General Hospital at the time. She worked from, she started off as a candy striker volunteering, then she became a nurse's aide, then she became a nurse, an LPN, and then in the 80s, she finally moved up to AR. So I'm old enough to remember when they had a crisis back then, when the age crisis first came about, they were pulling the LPNs to go work with the age patients before they knew anything that was going on. And that was all about safe staffing then, and the nurses had to walk out because they didn't know what was going on at the time. As I said, my mother, she worked there and she retired from Robert Wood. It was Middlesex General Hospital when she started, Robert Wood when she finished. And we saw so many changes. I remember when there was an east wing and a west wing in the old building, and I remember her working 11 to 7, not being with us because she was taking care of patients at night from 11 to 7. And, you know, we basically, I'm not saying we had to fend for ourselves because that would probably be illegal, but we did have to do a lot of things in our house, you know, because she wasn't there, because she was working from 11 to 7. So I do support nurses. I mean, I had no choice. My mother...
I also want to say that in my past life, I worked as part of a medical team for the Robert Wood Johnson Medical School and recognize firsthand the work and dedication of nurses, and so thank you for coming here and sharing your story.
I appreciate your advocacy. Everyone should have the right to fight for their labor, right? We stand with labor. I personally support Senate Bill 304. Obviously, the city council doesn't have a vote on it, but I do support it, and I hope that there is a peaceful resolution to this matter swiftly.
Thank you so much for coming now, and we will be looking forward, I'm going to research and then read a bit more about the bills, and just thank you. Thank you for what you do, and thank you for coming tonight. Thank you. I have a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Castaneda?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Secor Ludwick?
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan?
Yes.
Councilperson Eddie Morris?
Yes.
No way. I'm...